...be in order, if you can, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Commissioner Mullins, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful evening, and we pause and remember to be grateful for all that we have in Sturgis, for the team that we have serving the city, for all the good things that we have going for us in the city, for the blessings represented in our people, our businesses. We just thank you for all that we have. Here it is, Thanksgiving, we're thankful. We pray over tonight's proceedings that they would be positive and pleasing to you, that they would be for the good of the residents that we work for, and help us all to remember, in the always-mentioned words of Vice Mayor Mullins, help us all to remember to be kind and give each other grace, compassion, time, and patience. And pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Rose.
Commissioner Burr.
Here.
Commissioner Boring.
Here.
Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Harrington.
Here.
Commissioner Abs.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Present.
Mayor Perez.
Here.
Okay, moving on with the agenda with proclamations and presentations, tonight we have our state representative Steve Carl giving us the legislative update. If you would, Steve, please come up to the podium. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Perez, it's good to see all of you, and I guess just give a quick update, yeah, on how things are going up in Lansing. Just as a reminder, in terms of the political makeup, the Republicans have control of the House, the Democrats have control of the Senate, and of course Gretchen Whitmer is a Democrat. And because of that, there is a unique dynamic where we have, for the first time, I have been in experience where the legislature has been in split power between the House and the Senate. My first term, the Republicans had both chambers. My second term, the Democrats had both chambers. So now that I'm in my third term, it's been a little bit unique. And one thing that I have worked on this term that got through the House was regarding non-disclosure agreements. I don't believe legislators should be signing non-disclosure agreements in their legislative capacity. That passed with broad bipartisan support through the House. That was a good transparency bill, I believe. There are different perspectives on whether or not NDAs should be signed by local elected officials, like you all, and whether that's more appropriate than legislators. That certainly, I think, is a more compelling argument, whether you agree or disagree with that. I'm inclined towards the transparency nonetheless, but certainly as legislators, I don't see any reason why we'd be signing NDAs in our official capacity. So it was an honor to work on that one. And the budget this year was unique, and there still is some controversy. I am a little bit uncertain in terms of the final number, because the Citizen Research Council says that it actually was $83.9 billion, and an increase from the last fiscal year. But that was regarding, we had to wait to see how some of the federal money ended up coming through, because of course we had the long federal government shutdown. The theory was it was going to be less than $81 billion, which would have been a slight reduction from the last fiscal year. And that was seen by the Republicans in the House as a massive victory, that despite us only having one chamber, we were able to negotiate and get that through. But it was odd, and I just want to share with some of you something that I worked on. I don't, it'll be a little bit difficult to explain, but it's an equation, I call it raise. I just came up with it this year. And it's that the new revenue that we have for the state of Michigan to work with equals the revenue that we had, that's the R, the revenue from last year, plus A, which is any additional revenue, which would come from raising taxes, fines, and fees to higher than we were getting otherwise, plus I, which is the complicated part, because that's just the market adjustments from people moving in or out of the state to inflation, towards just economic productivity from the private sector, and that'll impact how much revenue the state of Michigan has because of that as well. That one is what PRAK, the Revenue Estimating Conference, goes through and basically has to try to project. And then minus us, that'd be subtracting any revenues that we'd get rid of, and then plus E, which would be any external forces from federal budget decisions. Like, for example, there was going to be a business-friendly reduction in income taxes, where the state of Michigan just follows whatever the federal government does, and because the federal government was lowering, we were going to lower along with them, but we decided to decouple from, or to break away from what the federal government was doing, making us go back to where we were before, which adds to the A and therefore increases the amount of revenue the state gets. So ceteris paribus, or all else held equal, if you want to make it more simple, had we not made any of the decisions to raise or lower taxes, we would have had less money to work with with the state of Michigan. But Republicans agreed to raise taxes in a couple of spots, which I disagreed with. I think we should have just let it fall where it would have, without making those adjustments. But anyway, that was a little bit complicated. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me to further extrapolate on that. But I do want to just, you know, keep it pretty short and see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Steve?
If a question doesn't relate to what you just gave us, but I see they have a petition going around the state of Michigan for elimination of property tax. Could you relate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so that's the AxMyTax petition effort. What it would do is it would eliminate property taxes, and it would take some state money and repurpose it towards local. The vast majority of property taxes do stay locally. It's about $17.3 billion in 2024 throughout the state of Michigan. So our local property taxes are just a small portion of that $17.3 billion. But other than the state education tax, the vast majority of property taxes people pay stays locally. So some people have a concern with axing the property tax, because that would be a huge dent on local government. And then what would end up having to happen is the state of Michigan would have to backfill that money, which I think would be unwise for us to not, because that would create a big problem with our local municipalities. So what would then happen is the state of Michigan would have less money for things that they do, like big corporate giveaways to electric vehicle battery plants with ties to the Chinese Communist Party and other places where we would have to constrain our government's spending. So in scenario A, if we don't pass AxMyTax, we have about $81 billion for the state government, plus that $17 billion locally, which is just shy of $100 billion if you add those two together. If we get rid of that $17 billion in property taxes, and then we'd have a much smaller state budget, make the locals whole, that to me would be better. Could it come with strings attached? Yes, but strings are attached by state government as is. So any fear about potential strings attached, well, just live year by year, and you'll see there's more strings attached anyway. So why hide from that fear? I say you might as well ax the property tax and get rid of some of the government blow along the way.
You think we'd make up with that with sales tax?
There are theories where you could raise taxes otherwise, well, either sales tax, or income tax, or something like that. Sales tax would be the most logical if you are going to raise taxes. But our budget about four or five years ago, back when Representative Miller was in there, would have been, you know, about the type of size to where, you know, with that $17 billion going back, would be back to where we're only four or five years ago for state spending. So government's gotten much bigger very quickly in the last few years. More so, actually, like three through five or six, seven, eight years ago, it was getting bigger fast. And actually, it has been more stagnant in the last three years for the state of Michigan. But again, I think the perception most people would have is that the state budget goes up or down based on fiscal responsibility of the legislature. It's more the market forces that impact how much money we have to spend, unless we adjust the tax rates. So I would recommend not raising the sales tax and just having the state of Michigan have to get much leaner. That would be, you know, we'd have to make big changes there, but that's what I would recommend.
Question on the gas tax.
Okay, yes.
I know a lot of states are raising gas tax, because, I mean, there are quite a few folks going to electric vehicles. Is there something in the works to help maybe level out the playing field, like to where the folks with electric vehicles would be paying their fair share as well?
Yeah, so, good question. There are talks about that. For starters, with the gas tax and/or taxes for the roads, we have our renewals every year that we do. And so if you have a gasoline vehicle, your registration every year is lower than it is for the EVs and hybrids. They pay a higher rate at the beginning of the year. So somebody who doesn't drive a whole lot and has an EV, they'd be paying a higher rate than somebody who doesn't have an EV. However, somebody who has an EV that is driving a lot and pays that little bit higher for registration for the year, and then they're not paying the gas tax at the pump, they are paying less overall. So it just depends on how much you drive. But there are talks that are going on. It doesn't, I mean, the people who are lobbying on it say it's not going to happen in the next year or two. That's basically how they start their pitch. But it would be tracking how many miles people are driving. That does give people hesitancy, because they don't want to be tracked on where they're going and what all they're doing. But they do say that they do have ways to where they can track your mileage without saying, you know, where you are in terms of GPS location and coordinates. So that's the theory that's being pitched, but it doesn't sound like that's anything that's going to happen in the next couple of years. That's, the people advocating for that think probably four, five, six years from now it'd be more likely.
Hey Steve, on that note.
Yes.
As far as tracking mileage, insurance companies do that now. If we have a customer that says, I only drive 3,000 miles a year, can I get a better insurance rate? Oh yeah, we can give you a better insurance rate, but come next year when that policy renews and you drove 10,000 miles, your bill, you're going to get one hefty bill, so.
Right.
I don't offer those anymore, because they get the sticker shock.
Sure, yeah, and I mean, I don't know if you just show your odometer, or what would be the route to gauge that. I'm not entirely sure what their plan would be if, you know, you go and when you get your oil changed, that part of that, and I'm just making that up.
Yeah, it's on the app on the phone, it tracks the movement.
Okay.
It'll track where you're going, but it just tracks.
Okay.
Tracks the movement in the phone.
Yeah, and so if they can track your mileage without where you are, that would give peace to some people who just don't want to be tracked. Yes.
Yeah, is there anything going on up there to roll back some of this green energy stuff that's going on out there?
Well.
The mandates that they have specifically about what, what do I say? About the rollbacks and switching over to all green energy instead of being able to use diesel in coal?
There's, it's kind of, it's pretty difficult. I would say that's a quite partisan situation. We did get Public Act 233 and 235 last term, when the Democrats had the trifecta. That did pass along party lines. That's been a big issue for the townships and the community looking into. Basically, the MPSC, or the State Board, is the one who gets to determine where one of these solar or wind type of projects go, and that the townships don't have that decision-making locally. So that is something that every Democrat voted for, every Republican voted against. The Senate's not about to reverse that. There are tax incentives that have been given for Green New Deal type of concepts that I don't like. And it's just not likely, unless Republicans get control back, that that would change. There are, however, conversations about giving more tax credits to some of the non-renewable energy type concepts. And, you know, my thought is just let's not give the tax incentives to Green New Deal concepts instead of giving incentives in both directions. That would be, that would be what I would like to see. Unfortunately, I just don't think that the political dynamic is set up for that at this time.
Any questions, any further questions, Steve?
Okay, well, thank you, it's good to see all of you normally on Wednesday nights. I'm in sessions, difficult to make it down here to Sturgis, so it's good to see you guys. Frank has my number, I know several of you on the board have my number, but if any of you ever need to get ahold of me, Frank, feel free to share my number with us.
Steve, thank you for coming out, thank you for giving us an update, thank you for asking to come tonight, appreciate you.
Yep.
Safe travels on where you're going next.
Yep, thank you, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any visitors here tonight that want to make a public comment for items not listed on the agenda? Okay. Moving on, approval for, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Support.
And support, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So moved. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
So we have a motion?
I have a question.
And we have a question.
Um, 8D, the dashing-through downtown parking lot closure?
Yes.
Having trouble understanding, is that just going to be closed down on Thursday?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Yep, second. Is there a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, moving on to unfinished business. We got the zoning district changes, second reading, 405 West Congress Streets. Mr. Wilbridge, welcome, Will.
Dan.
Oh, yes, I won't have any comment on this.
You abstaining tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second reading for zoning district change at 408 West Congress. Dan Boring here has made a request to change this from manufacturing zoning district to the R3. Dan owns the property at 406 West Congress, which used to be a commercial building, which he intends to transition into a single-family dwelling. This parcel is right across the railroad tracks from that, and he intends to utilize it for accessory building and maybe some parking for that site. He'd have to go through, again, a variance request to be able to utilize it for accessory use, but it's possible because it's split by a railroad, so. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Just a quick curiosity question.
Yes.
So he can use that property, it would look like somebody's front yard or a nice backyard in terms of plants and everything else, he wouldn't be restricted, correct?
Well, I know he can't use it, it's just a vacant lot. He can use it as is, just a vacant building, maintain it, but he wouldn't be able to, like, put a garden on it or anything at this time?
Or anything?
Nothing, nothing accessory to the residential. He's got to have a principal structure there first.
In order to have trees and plants and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I was just curious how that works.
Probably put some trees on it, but I mean, as far as putting a garden or doing anything accessory to a house, you've got to have a principal use first.
All right, thank you.
After the variance, though, is that possible that he could have a garden?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's, just to be clear.
Question, Kathy?
Just another one of those, I'm glad you asked it, but you didn't realize.
Just curious, popped into my head.
Any questions for Will? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve the rezoning of 408 West Congress, parcel number 052-777-146-00, from manufacturing zoning district to residential 3 zoning district, effective December 22, 2025, as presented.
So we have a motion?
Support.
And support, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So moved. Next on, don't go, don't go away, Will, you're on the agenda a couple more times. Next on the agenda is the zoning district change, second reading, 907 and 1101 North Ottawa.
Thank you, this is, property's owned by Radiant Life Church. So 1011 North Ottawa, which used to be a church building that has been recently demolished. They want to change that from BOs to the R3 zoning district. And then 907 is the actual large church parcel where that's split zoned, R2 and R3. So that would be rezoned all the way over to R3. And then when they are done, they're going to combine four of their parcels. So 1011, which was the old church parcel that was demolished, 911 North Ottawa just south of that, 907 and 1,005 North Ottawa is their goal. And then they would transition, I think it's, as part of this, there was like, there used to be a house there, if you know about it. There used to be a house, that part would be combined, and they would transition that into like a commercial office building for the church to use. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve the rezoning of 907 North Ottawa, parcel number 052-120-003-00, and 1011 North Ottawa, parcel number 052-777-010-20, to the residential 3, R3 zoning district, effective December 22, 2025, as presented.
So we have a motion?
Support.
And support, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So moved. Next is the outdoor training facility special land use, second reading.
All right, thank you again. So this year here was a project that we were working with Glenos Community College. They had presented in front of the planning commission, looking to do an outdoor, like, CDL training facility. That's kind of spurred the whole thing. And when we were looking through it, we thought would be a little more broad with it, that might encourage additional uses out there. So this would be a principal use that would be not accessory to a building. So we had to go through, and again, we came up with conditions and specific requirements that they would have to follow. This use would be a special land use in the M and the M2 zoning district. We had to add that exception that would allow it, the planning commission, to use it as a special land use outside of the principal structure. And then we, again, just tied in setback requirements, fencing screening, lighting requirements, surface material requirements, hours of operation, the noise from the trucks that may be there, whatever else may be going on. If there was state licensing that was required, they would have to provide that as part of their approval process. If it was a non-existent site before, they'd have to go through the site plan review. If it was an existing site, they would just have to provide a sketch plan showing us how they're going to utilize the site. And then the permit would be renewed on an annual basis. So we would just review that and present it to the planning commission for an annual review and then a renewal. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Will?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve amendments to the zoning code for outdoor training facilities, effective December 22, 2025, as presented.
So we have a motion?
Support.
And support, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So moved.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. We have trucks, new business, A, trucks over two axles, traffic control orders. Mr. Barry Cox, welcome, Barry.
Mayor, let's hear it for him. New business.
New business.
All right, so here we have, sorry about the crudity of this map in regards to this particular area, but I've been hamstrung by some software issues that haven't been able to resolve. So on this particular map, the yellow exclamation points indicate where we currently have signage to reflect no truck traffic over two axles. You can see the 200 block North Maple has one at each end. North Fork has one basically at each intersection. There's nothing in Prospect, because Prospect is a major street, and we do allow traffic, traffic on that particular street, Act 51 Major Street. And then as you move further east, Gene has nothing, Center has nothing, and Susan has one random sign out there in the middle of nowhere. I got a request from the residents of 200 block Gene, and then I've been working with the manager at Mad Cheetah, trying to keep semis off of Gene Street. But realistically, the only way to properly do that is with signage. So that's why we're here tonight, traffic control orders. We presented to the city commission, the city commission approves them. It's been reviewed by the city manager, myself, and Ryan Bonazig. But what we intend to do, because some of these signs that are out there aren't there with a proper traffic control order, is to have a proper traffic control order for them. So that's what the red do-not-enter sign symbols are supposed to represent, where we would have to put additional signage to basically prohibit traffic on all of these local Act 51 streets, which would be the remainder of North Maple. North Fork doesn't need anything, because it has a proper traffic control order for the entire stretch. Gene Street, which is the primary one before you this evening, and then we would include Susan as well. And Hatch is a, Hatch is a major street, Prospect, East West, obviously US 12, Lakeview. So there's multiple ways to get between the Mad Cheetah without going through some of the local residential streets. So after reviewing this, we came up with a little larger scope traffic control order grouping for the city commission to consider. So with that, I guess I'll try to answer any questions you may have regarding what we're trying to accomplish here.
This is related, Barry, and I suppose it's nothing more than informal feedback, but just in the past couple of months alone, and I see it on a regular basis, just in the past couple of months alone, though, I saw a semi-truck on Mechanic Street. I saw a semi-truck on South Ottawa, which makes my heart hurt. I've seen him on East Congress and various of, I know, South Maple, I know there's, there are semi-trucks to serve.
Taco Locos.
Taco Locos, I know there are occasional semi-trucks that serve Congress School. There are obviously semi-trucks that serve the hospital and can't, can't get to the hospital without traveling on Lakeview or some other side streets. Yeah.
So, yeah, so Congress entirely, Commissioner Miller, is a major street.
Oh, okay.
From end to end. Lakeview, South Lakeview is a major street from end to end. But you are correct, in regards to hospital, you cannot get to the hospital, drive primary parking lot without driving on a local street.
Right, without going on Myrtle or Walker somehow. And Cottage, I think I saw one, and I talked to Ryan about it. I saw Ryan and levied my same feedback. And he said, he said, actually, there's, if somebody's, something about if they're going to a destination, one I saw was a moving truck on Mechanic. I think he said something like if it's, if it's going to a legitimate destination like that, there's not much they can do. But again, it's nothing more than informal feedback, and I'm sure you've seen it many times as well, but I wanted to relay that on to you. Having worked to pass our millage, or to renew our millage, and being one of nine and many more people in this room who helps pay for it, it hurts to see those semi-trucks on our streets. But I know there are limited things we can do. I guess wherever there are similar orders that we can do to inhibit as much as we can large truck traffic where it shouldn't be. And I guess I didn't know about Congress, that's, that was news to me. Wherever we can inhibit it, though, would be appreciated.
I don't get too worked up about moving trucks anywhere, as far as on city streets. I do get a little worked up on some.
True, if it's a moving truck, yeah, come on right in, if you're moving it.
There's only so much you can do.
I know, I know, yep.
But this would definitely clean this area up pretty significantly.
Would the signage just be at the start of each street, the end, end of each street?
You got to, you got to start on the street to get on the street.
Well, it's, I, you know, because I, like, I've seen him on South Ottawa as well, and they just, all right.
Yeah. It's getting harder and harder with the GPS units that exist and they don't really.
There's probably not a way to have it exclude streets on GPS, that's probably not possible.
I would volunteer to use spike strips if you guys would allow me to.
Well, it's your, it's your house, you can put whatever.
So Barry, one thing, Barry, is that the Susan Street there, there was actually one on northbound, or on southbound, but there wasn't one on northbound, is that what I'm saying?
Right, off of, off of East West Street, there was only one on the southbound. You know, I honestly, our traffic controllers go back to, into the 70s, a little more sporadically in the 70s, so I don't know when that sign got there. I don't know why it got there. I don't know if there were other signs, and they just happened to disappear over the course of time, which does happen. But we do know that, you know, there is some commercial, potential commercial traffic, or at least there was with Michiana Snacks, that was up on Susan Court, that this would have been a direct route for them to get there potentially. So, you know, I don't know what the future holds for buildings up in that area, but we do know Mad Cheetah's up there, and we do know that Mad Cheetah, the semis that come to there, like I said, the general manager has talked to his face, till his face is red in the face, don't go that way. But he feels this is the best option to try to say, not just, don't go that way, but here's the sign that says you should not, you know, if you get, you could seemingly get.
The other question that I have is on the Center Street. Is there, there's no signage going to be on that street, correct?
That's correct.
West and Hatch, and there's a reason why there's no signage on that street? Because it doesn't go all the way to US 12, is that the reason?
That's the primary reason why, Commissioner Mullins, that I did not include that particular street. That's certainly within your purview, if you want. That's certainly within your purview if you want to include that particular street to do that. We can write it up and, and add a couple more signs, but.
Well, if you don't feel more than, I mean.
At this point, I don't.
Down West Street, say, oh crap, I've got to get forward to Hatch and not see signs on Center and take it, I guess it'd probably be very few times it'd happen if you, in your judgment estimation, you don't really see why spend money on signs, it'd be a thing for it, I guess, but I'd ask the question.
Yeah, we do know there's an issue on Gene. So we're trying to deal with that and then it became a question of do you remove the rest of the signs that you have out there? And then to your, to your point, well, then they can just use Maple Street or they can just use, you know, Susan Street.
How soon until their signs are up?
I cannot answer that question.
Months or weeks?
I cannot answer that question. That is not in my direct authority.
I don't know if there's any signs laying around out here at D W or something.
Uh, not to my knowledge, they don't.
Do we have any of the, any big signs on highways coming into town that says something along the lines of no trucks over two axles on any side streets?
There is some type of large sign regarding trucks, but I don't think it's, you know, it doesn't really get into specifics, I don't think, Commissioner Smith.
I know, I know coming into town on sixty-six, there's one that says no trucks over two and a half tons stopping or standing.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty consistent on the four major federal state highways that come in, that particular sign.
Yeah, that doesn't.
But it has nothing restrictive about over two axes.
Yeah. Maybe we should look into putting some of those signs up just coming into town.
You still have to kind of know where they are.
Side streets are, yeah. Just thought.
Beware, Sturgis has a commissioner that puts out spike strips.
Yes, sir.
Driving.
South Ottawa.
South Ottawa.
I'll have it locked down.
Any other questions for Barry?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve traffic control orders number two zero two five dash zero four, dash zero five, and dash zero six for Gene Avenue, North Maple Avenue, and Susan Avenue as presented.
So we have a motion.
Support.
And support all in favor?
Aye.
And oppose. So move. Next under new business is the two thousand twenty-seven Streets Design Professional Service Agreement. Mr. Barry Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. So again, another rudimentary map, even potentially worse than the last one. Because I couldn't get street names to print on it, but we think we know why. But anyway, we're, we're trying to move forward with capital plan for next budget, next year's budget on the streets that we believe we can get all the lead service signs replaced out of and then get paved starting October one of twenty twenty-six. So this would be twenty-six, twenty-seven budget year. And so before you this evening is a professional services agreement with Felice and Vandenbrink. It's number twelve, and this would be for the design for these particular, these five street segments that you have on here, which is North Prospect from Maine, not from the railroad, to East Lafayette, Washington, the entirety of that, two blocks of North Street from West Street northward, North Park Street for two blocks, which is one of the streets we actually already completed lead service line replacements on, and then Enterprise Avenue. And these would be streets where we would generally just do, be doing mill and resurfacing. It's actually a pretty similar program and treatments we would be doing, that we're doing the twenty twenty-five Streets Program in that we're having to remove curbs at intersections and put in proper ADA ramps and then mill the street and then pave the street. That's kind of the general concept and it's just there's slightly different depths for each of these streets based on current conditions and, and current underlying asphalt layers. So their proposal is for forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars to complete the, the design work that would be preliminary, final, and bidding services for the twenty twenty-seven Street Rehabilitation Project with the goal of basically having contractors start immediately first part of October. We did originally have thirty-two thousand dollars in the budget for design of this project, but at the September twenty-fourth city commission meeting, that number was adjusted up to seventy-two thousand. As it's currently structured, they intend to do construction engineering for this particular project when we actually physically construct it. So there would be an additional professional services agreement or amendment at that particular point in time. With that, try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Barry?
Can I, a couple related to streets, just curious. North Clay, that section between Hatch and Maine, where the railroad track is, is anything going to be done on that? I just need, I don't need a timeframe, but that's the only part that hasn't been resurfaced.
Right.
The rest of it is great. Is that, is that in the plans anyplace or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other is.
In spring.
Other is.
We're done for now.
It's related to the other streets we were talking about. Is there, are there going to be any street signs put up on twelve showing what those streets are? Because they're not there for many of them.
You noticed that, Commissioner?
Yes, yep. Well, who walks the streets? Yes, I did. Is that our responsibility or the state's?
Want me to handle that?
That's it.
It's our responsibility, we will be putting.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know, who is responsible? No, I know what streets they are, I don't need the signs, someone else might, but thank you. Just thought I'd throw that in since you were standing there.
Not a problem.
Those are my questions.
The street signs? Help me understand them.
While you're walking down the street, it doesn't say that Prospect's is there or Gene Street or.
When they redid US twelve coming, coming through town, the street, the street sign is on twelve.
No, so you walk, you, you gotta walk twelve once in a while, Aaron.
They were removed prior to the US twelve project.
How many signs are missing? Because there's nine of us here, I mean, we can easily change it.
Hey, we'll take all volunteers we can get if you want to.
I can't, I can't count and walk at the same time, sorry.
Damn boring street.
Not all of them got removed, but most of them.
At least, okay, I could only attest to the north side. I haven't walked the south side. Okay, anyways, moving on. Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve amendment number twelve to the professional services agreement with Felice and Vandenbrink Engineering Incorporated in the amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars for preliminary design, final design, and bidding services on the twenty twenty-seventh Street Rehabilitation Project.
So a motion.
Support.
Can I ask a question before we move? Just one on that, because in the, in the packet here, it says that we would like, we amended our budget for this in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And I'm looking at these adjustments and they're two oh two and two oh three of the moating and local streets, is that correct?
Yeah.
So they were just part of the amendments that were there? Because there were, one amendment was for thirty-five and one was for one twenty and the other? And this was for seventy or?
For forty thousand total?
Where, did that come from, a combination of both of those funds?
Both funds would have been increased because it split the design costs, but it also included what Barry was talking about at that priority in September to adjust the budgets for. So not only did we amend for the design cost, but also what else was going on.
Yeah, for the other stuff that's going to be.
Yeah, so we, we changed the treatment level on the west, on the Electric Court area that was part of that, as well as Cornelian as far as the level. And we also added Mortimer, that was part of that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then there was a recognition that the amount that we originally had budgeted to do the design work for this was not going to be enough. Now, the only, the only major street segment out of these five is Prospect, so probably not going to have that much expense coming out of, out of the major street to design that one street comparative to the other four, but we believe it should be enough.
Okay, because I just, I'm reading that amendment and it just said in the two oh two, it just said that that one was amended with an additional north centerville roadstorm sort of telepathy and cleaning project. Didn't mention anything about street rehab or street resurfacing. So I would only assume that it all came out of the local streets, but you're saying that it come out of both for this forty thousand dollar amendment? Okay. I was a little confused on that wording from this, tonight versus what was in the amendment.
Yeah, it included an increase of about twenty thousand on both, the major and local from the amendment side, because it was originally thirty thousand in original budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So we had a motion and we had support. Do we have any other questions? All right, we have a motion, support all in favor?
Aye.
And oppose. So move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on the agenda is the state line substation construction minutes, Mr. Chris DeCarr.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Commissioners, in recent capital plans, the city has budgeted to construct the state line substation. You guys have been ordering parts and pieces for that substation for the last year and a half, as you recall. It has been about a three year, a year long process of the planning and ordering of equipment to construction finally happening this year. We advertised a bid for the project on bid net and solicited bids from nine contractors, four of which did bid on the project. GRP Engineering completed the review of the bids and a bid tab is included in your packet. Newkirk Electric submitted a low bid for the project in the amount of three million three hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. This bid is a complete and conforming bid. GRP Engineering recommends awarding the state line bid to Newkirk Electric. Included in your packet is a budget and a cost spreadsheet for the substation project. As shown in the spreadsheet, commission budgeted eight hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four and an additional three hundred, three million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the project. As part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, two million was included, with some expected carryover into this fiscal year. Due to the design and lead time delays, significantly more costs and the entire construction project will now be in this fiscal year. It may carry over slightly into, to next with the steel coming in October or slated to come in October. Between twenty-four and twenty-five, four point seven three million was budgeted for the construction of the substation in the twenty-four, twenty-five capital budgets. Total cost for the substation build is currently at five million seven hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, including a ten percent contingency. We did not include land in this total, but it was purchased for two hundred and ninety-five thousand with a hundred and fifty of that expected to be cooped for the sale of the battery storage project. Cost escalations are due to several factors, as we've all been talking with the equipment, tariffs being one, price escalation on a lot of the equipment. I noted in here, one of the, the breakers that we did order two years ago for a project between that time and last year when we ordered the same exact breaker, there was about an eighty-one percent price increase just on that one piece of equipment alone, so we can imagine prices are going up very rapidly. So, and also based on a two million, five hundred thousand dollar difference from the high bid to low bid, there, there's not a lack of work out there. We had two contractors that typically build, bid on these type of projects that didn't even turn in a bid just due to their scheduling, it's full up. So with that being said, I guess I would entertain any questions if you guys have any.
Any questions for Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve the bid from Newkirk Electric in the amount of three million three hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents to the state line substation construction as presented.
So we have a motion. So again, and support all in favor?
Aye.
And oppose?
Aye.
So move.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission approve a contingency budget for five hundred four thousand four hundred and ten dollars for the state line substation construction project.
So we have a motion. So again, and support all in favor?
Aye.
And oppose? So move. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the commercial industrial demand response.
Yeah, thank you. So the Michigan Public Power Agency has entered into an agreement with a third party business, which is Voltus, which will allow the commercial and industrial customers to participate in what they call a demand response program. Participation in this program is voluntary for MPPA, meant for our community and also for the customers. So customers can individually decide whether to participate or not. Demand response is when the customers agree to reduce their electric usage under specific conditions, such as during a grid emergency and are compensated for doing so. This helps utilities avoid having to build expensive new generation by using existing resources more efficiently. If approved, Voltus would work with the city staff and MPPA to engage education and roll interested CNI customers here in Sturgis, providing value to the city and to the community. For the customers, this program offers a way to manage and reduce their energy costs and provides a revenue stream through annual performance payments. These payments are up to fifty thousand per megawatt based on today's market conditions. Under the program, CNI customers would choose when to perform their annual dispatch test to minimize the interruptions to their operations and may, may actually never be asked to participate in an event. This is just a way for, I'll say, us and, and MPPA to utilize our already existing customers to reduce load in an emergency. Otherwise, no one, you know, we could install generators similar to what we're going to do, but this actually also counts as capacity, which is another cost to, you know, all the residents and, and members of our community. It's all in, in baked into the rates. I also listed here, you know, how it works. We would be contacting those customers or Voltus would, asking if they wanted to participate. This is only for commercial and industrial customers at this point. It doesn't mean in the future that you guys couldn't allow this to be extended to, to residential, but right now, commercial and industrial is the only, only customers that they're, they're wanting to, to go towards. So I guess with that, would entertain any questions you may have?
Any questions for Chris? Yeah. What's that called when they run that test a couple times a year to check the maximum load they use to set our price on the electricity?
Yeah, so we have the, the one CP, is that what you're talking about, coincident peak?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have the, the one CP which sets our transmission rate, and then you also have the, the five coincident peaks. So they pick them throughout the AEP system, the, the five hours when it's its highest usage, and then they average those. Currently, we, we attempt a peak shave with the current engine, that's why we plan to install more generation. Essentially, these, these, this, this demand response program in the future, I'll say, could potentially hit one of those peaks if one of those peaks was an emergency, which would also be a benefit to us as well.
Well, can we just do the testing on those days?
Well, so that's why, you know, I mean, we could, but we don't pick when the customer tests. We as the city could very much if, if we were to become a, a customer. But the customer gets to pick when they do their test, if they, they sign up, because we don't necessarily want to mess up the production schedules or, or anything else in regards to that. So it's a pretty unique program. It is being run in, in other states across the country, but it is just another tool in the tool bag to, to help us keep costs low. but it is just another tool in the toolbag to, to help us keep costs low and, and give something back to the customer, essentially. Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Further questions?
What, what rates an emergency?
So the, the transmission operator is actually the one that, that sends out that in emergency. There's only been one since I've been here, an actual emergency would have been Christmas Eve, two years ago, if you recall, when they asked people to, to reduce load or shed load. Doesn't happen very often, but it's, it's when the, the system is strained and at its peak. Peak demand and generation isn't there to keep up ultimately.
It says that the city would have to have a representative member. I'm assuming that according to this, it would be you?
That would be me, yep.
How much extra time do you have to put into something like this?
Not much. I do, I did ask, and, and I don't even have to participate in meeting with the customers, but I think this is a good way for, for me to get out there and meet the customers when they get in contact with them. This agreement is solely between Voltus and the customer, does not involve us. All we or all you are doing is giving them permission to come and contact our customers and sign them up for the program. MPPA in turn has signed an agreement. That way, MPPA and the city gives first right of refusal for that capacity that they may incur off of this program.
If they have an emergency, then how do they notify all the customers?
They notify the customers directly through their control room or their, their people. And it's, they, the customer would have one, or you know, maybe a couple designated people that would get either a phone call or a text or some other alert, might come through email, might come through all three. Yeah, they'd be notified that way. Typically, an emergency as well is not, we know that in advance typically, meaning within twelve, twenty-four hours ahead of time, we'll know if, if that shortage is coming due to the day ahead market. So they give us usually typically a twenty-four hour notice on whether we need to run or reduce load. Doesn't always happen that way, but we haven't been through many emergencies either, so.
Now, would that include firing up the diesel?
If, if we're in one of those emergency situations, we're going to be running everything we've got, yes.
Do we have to give permission from AEP?
No. You used to have to, but now that we deal directly through MPPA, we can shed load whenever and however we want.
Okay, my main concern is that you're busy enough with everything we got going in the city, rather than having to run around.
I have no part of alerting customers that they need to shed load. All we would deal with is, is city itself, meaning the generation department and the stuff that we already have. So I would not be involved with letting commercial and industrial customers know. That, that would be strictly handled through Voltus. The only part that I'd be involved with through this process is just the initial meeting, talking with them about the program that the city did give permission to these, you know, Voltus to talk to them.
And more specifically, Chris's appointed role through the agreement is oversight of the program through MPPA.
Yep.
If, if they were to welcome other companies other than Voltus, he would sit on a board that helped decide that and help talk about how those things were played out. So it's not necessarily a day-to-day role with, like, like Chris said, working with customers and helping Voltus implement this. It's more oversight of the program with MPPA.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd be enforcing this just like twice.
What's that?
So, Chris, I got a question.
Yeah.
So let's, let's say I own a plastic manufacturing facility. If I get called, say, nay tomorrow, you know, at noon, where, you know, we're going to be short, we need power, whatever. Would this scenario be, can you close second and third shift tomorrow?
It could be that, or maybe, so ultimately, they have to test once a year to, to determine how much load they can drop and whatever they sign up on their agreement is, is what that number is. It may not be closing whole shift. It might just be reducing, you know, maybe certain air conditioning load or some of that nature.
Okay.
That maybe even doesn't affect production, I don't know. Now, there may be something in there, and I haven't read the agreement, that they would go to the customer where they, if they, they gave more, that they would get paid more. That, that would be my guess, but. They would, they would already kind of determine that. But there is also, you know, obviously, it's, you're dealing with manufacturing and, and production people, sometimes they can't, right? Perform, so there is no penalty for that, which is kind of odd. But Voltus has a, a pool large enough to be able to, to soak some of that up. They already kind of plan on customers, not all of them being able to participate or to, to shed load when you need them. But next year, when they want to sign up for the program, there'd probably be other stipulations, you know, given to the customer for that, but.
So this isn't a brand new thing with this company?
Voltus?
They, they're already doing this?
Correct. Yeah.
Are there any examples of what kind of compensation these companies are? I mean, because it's only commercial and industrial, I can't imagine ever residential, because there's not enough. You need a billion of them to equal to one of these, right?
Correct.
But do you have any idea on what kind of compensation they're talking about, like, per megawatt?
Yeah, so what the example was given to us was, was in a range in, in current conditions today of fifty thousand dollars a megawatt, which, I mean, obviously, is going to take a, a good sized customer, right? I mean, we've got a local customer that can, that has a large load, a seven megawatt load. So, you know, but could they, could they shed that much load, you know? I, I don't know, it just depends on the situation. So I guess if I broke that down, yeah, I mean, on a kilowatt hour basis, you're talking fifty bucks, right? So it's not, it's not huge. When you get down, but the larger the load, the, the better, or the more you get, right? So.
Thank you.
And, and just so you know, some customers, I'll say, already participate from corporate level, similar to Walmart. And there's actually one other company in town as well. I don't think Myers is, is involved yet, but Walmart is already, from a corporate standpoint, a customer, not necessarily our store, but every other state, so.
With Voltus?
Yep, yeah, with Voltus.
There are other companies, or is this the one?
Uh, there are other companies. This is the one that has, that the MPPA has vetted out and has the most experience in this, this industry or this section for now. Doesn't mean that there aren't others out there that, that we would vet in the future if, they seem to be further ahead in the technology or in this, this atmosphere, so.
Go.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission adopt the resolution to authorize City of Sturgis to participate in the Michigan Public Power Agency Commercial and Industrial Demand Response Project as presented.
So we have a motion? Second. In support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. So move.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission appoint Chris McArthur as a representative member to the MPPA Commercial and Industrial Demand Response Project.
So we have a motion? Support. And support, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose. So move. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is the extension of curbside recycling to properties. Mr. Andrew Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Following up with our meeting earlier this month, where you, you all held the second reading of and approved an ordinance for continuation of the curbside recycling program. At that meeting, we discussed presenting future, or presenting language at a future meeting that would extend curbside recycling on an optional basis to properties with two and eight residential units per our, per ordinance, which equates to four to twenty-four dwelling units at the option of the property owner. So included in your packet was a draft resolution which would accomplish that. We provided provision for that in the ordinance language that was previously approved. Basically, it allows residential properties in these categories, which, by the way, currently receive recycling services under the program, to continue if they so choo, if they so choose. Of course, the, the note there is that it has to be at the request of the titled property owner in question. So it's not up to the tenant or, or resident to, to make the request of the city, has to be the property owner. They would, they would, again, be optional to, to participate in the program going forward, but otherwise would be subject to the ordinance in its entire, in its entirety. So happy to try and answer any questions you might have on this.
Any questions for Andrew?
Just, how many property owners right now would this affect?
Thirty-six.
Roughly?
Thirty-six, yeah.
Thirty-six property owners?
Thirty-six property owners. And again, you could, we could have four choose to participate, we could have thirty choose to participate, we could have thirty-six choose to participate.
Yeah, and that's thirty-six parcels.
Correct.
There may, you may have the same owner on a couple of those parcels.
So those are number parcels?
Right.
But, okay, and some of those, I already know there would be one, one owner would have multiple parcels, yeah.
Yeah.
In my, in my precinct, yeah.
And I would, I would expect that the parcels with smaller numbers of units are more, going to be more likely to participate. Probably than larger ones, that's a guess, but.
Who knows?
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission adopt the resolution authorizing optional participation of additional residential units in City curbside recycling program contingent upon curbside recycling ordinances changes being effective December fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So we have a motion?
Support.
And support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. So move. All right, moving on, with the agenda under Commissioner Stark's comments, we'll start with staff.
One parcel, two units.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Chris?
Yes, sir.
Well?
How do you want to have a Thanksgiving, come on?
Our law enforcement officer, anything tonight? Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to delve a little bit into Commissioner Harrington's comments regarding North Clay. North Clay is going to be part of what gets done in the spring, and there's a reason for that. Initially, we wanted to do that segment as well. However, we have two different locations where the roads that we're trying to pave touch railroads, and it's important to have only pave the railroad once for those opportunities. So that's why that entire segment was taken out, and hopefully, when the spring comes, we'll be able to accomplish that.
I thought the railroad probably had something to do.
Yeah.
With it, yeah.
So basically, paving is done, most of the projects are done.
And they're very nice.
We're trying to get, we're trying to get signage, you know, traffic control signage off the, off the roads by Thanksgiving. I don't know whether that, I've been told it's going to happen, I'm not sure that it has. They were cleaning up debris on, on the streets that they paved the last couple of weeks today, so we're basically done on, on that portion of it. So, yeah. Other than punch list items, those, the physical projects are complete, other than one that we ended up having to do that'll be by Commissioner Miller's house at some point in the near future, but.
I cleaned up the debris out of my corner.
Did you? It's about time.
Under the signs and everything. It's in the street now.
Yeah, there you go. Where it should be, right? Why would you want to have it on your yard if you just?
Street's free for you.
Well, there's no traffic going through.
And contrary to.
Is it open?
Contrary to, contrary to public belief or personal belief, I don't know everything that's going on out there in, in town, so, thanks.
Thank you, Barry. Anything for Mr. Stiles?
I'm just very disappointed that Barry doesn't know what I'm going to say. Secondly, I'm sure you all know the United Way's doing the Christmas Cash Raffle event again. Anybody who's interested in tickets, and I'm sorry, Andrew, if I sold you a hundred.
No, you're fine.
I have tickets, you can purchase them from me. Have a very, very Merry Thanksgiving, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Go Lions.
Anything from City Attorney? Nice to see you.
Well, thank you, thank you, sir.
Mr. Stiles, that's the second place line, I think.
What's that?
Just wanted to point that out.
But they did come back, as did the Cowboys.
Mr. Cook?
Uh, yeah, I also have United Way tickets, so if you don't get, if you don't get them from Mike tonight, you can get them from me or any of city staff, City of Staff coming up. That is a great program, and December tenth, we'll be here to, to draw the winner, so that's a good one. Mike, thanks for, thanks for mentioning something. Barry mentioned, we wrapped up most of our paving projects, everything's taken care of for the season, so happy to, happy to see that done. We're on our second pass for leaf pickup, brush pickup was completed through town. Want to note, we do have a ton of Christmas events coming up throughout the city, the week of December first. We have stuff at the Doyle, Auditorium has Nutcracker and a tea with the Sugar Plum Fairies, both that week. I will be attending both. The downtown Christmas events will start Thursday, run Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, as you saw with the, the Chris Kendall Mart and other events. So busy week, week of December first, a lot of, lot of Christmas things going on, so make sure you, you get out and enjoy all or some of them. And then a note that we do have City Hall being closed this week, Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving holiday. And then just finally, a reminder that we do have closed session.
Thank you. Move on to Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Smith?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Amber?
Yeah, Professor Gilrock has a very safe and fulfilling Thanksgiving, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Mill?
Happy Thanksgiving.
And go Lions. Commissioner Herring?
Happy Thanksgiving, and Compost closes tomorrow, in case anybody wants to make a mad run down to Wednesday. It's supposed to rain all day, so have fun.
Commissioner Adams?
Same thing, Happy Thanksgiving, and since Barry, you don't know everything, might, you might have a better day weather for Thanksgiving, if you.
I, I don't look past the next day, I really don't do it.
Sounds like it might be a little bit nasty, so really, truly, it's safe, if you're driving, may we?
Commissioner Moore?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Commissioner Wick?
I just want to give a shout out to those who work at the Auditorium, as well as those who are on the board. I'm just continually impressed at the way things look, the way things are run. We're very blessed to have the Auditorium in this little town, and so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Moore.
Sure. Maxwell, the Watership Voice reporter, had a story this past week on the flock cameras over in Three Rivers. And, and his article had mentioned that they discontinued theirs because they got the grant money through the state and federal government, whoever, and they had discontinued theirs in April of this year. Are still active?
Correct.
Correct.
Did we get the same federal funding for that?
No, we had done, we had done grants locally, so businesses participated the first year.
Okay, I knew there was money from somewhere.
That was the first year, and then most recently, that was part of the budget.
We just budgeted it?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I'd hate to lose that. I know a lot of people are concerned over privacy and tracking and all that stuff, so. I'm glad that we're still here. Since we're short on meeting time here, I thought I'd bring up something else here today. The employee pensions. I want to talk about that real quick, and maybe you all can give us some insight in that. I participate in 401K with my job. The employees of City of Sturgis are in pension program. They too contribute to that pension, correct?
Correct.
Now, what's, is there a percentage and, and like a match by the, the city as well, that is the same as like a 401K?
Their, their contributions are different depending on, wow, I mean, their, their payouts are different depending on the bargaining unit and how things are structured on the defined benefit pension. We also have defined contribution retirement options similar to a 401K. It's a 457 plan, and that does have an employer match.
Okay, so in any case, we're talking the end of the pension life, it's twenty-five years?
I'm sorry.
Twenty-five years to collect pension, is that what, what, were you, ten years to?
Five years.
Again, it depends a little bit, it depends on a little bit on bargaining unit, but it's typically twenty-five and out, or, or you're, you reach sixty years old. I mean, there's, there's variance depending on which, which bargaining unit.
Okay.
And things have changed over time, too.
So say if an employee were here for twenty-three years and they weren't quite to twenty-five, they weren't sixty-five, they quit, what, what would they get on that pension? Just what they contributed?
They would, no, they would say that in how many? If they're vested.
They're vested.
They're vested.
If they're vested and they quit after twenty-three.
If they're vested and they quit after twenty-three years, they would just have to wait to collect until they were eligible, whether that's sixty or sixty-five.
But they couldn't get the full benefits of waiting until the twenty-fifth if they were at least twenty-three.
Correct.
The only thing that the twenty-five does is allows you to collect immediately. So, twenty-three year, someone that's done twenty-five years will get more than somebody that's done twenty-three years, but it's just when you can start collecting.
Correct.
So, after twenty-five years, even if you're forty-five, you can start collecting.
Okay, well, I'm only bringing this up because of the fact that we had discussions on Ken City Clerk some time ago, and I don't understand why there was dissent to not approve part of his contract when we created one for you, which I feel very good that we got. And in that, we allow for you to buy out the remaining years if you're fired without cause, let go without cause after a certain period.
Correct.
So, it doesn't make sense to offer it for somebody that's got ten or fifteen years to go, because it's so expensive to continue to pay what you need to to get your full benefits at the end?
Correct.
My question tonight is, should we not offer that to all city employees? The ability, the ability to buy out the remaining years if they're within a certain five years, say, five years from the twenty-five-year period, or whatever, whenever they can recollect. I'm just looking at, we've done that for City Manager, we've done that for Ken, you know, contracted, the people that are under contract. But I'm wondering, is that not something that we should consider, offering to all employees? Not if they walk away from their job, not if they're fired for cause, but if they are let go without cause, to allow them the ability to make a choice for themselves, whether they want to do that or not. That's what I'm bringing to the commission tonight, just to see if that's something that might be worth for discussion. Well, the only reason I ask is because we have, I was just talking with Ryan at the retirement of Andrew Strug, Strugwick the other day, and nothing about this at all, I just asked him, because Strugwick's done, and he was telling me how many years he's been here and what he's got left to his potential retirement if he chose to do that. And it got me thinking, I'm like, what if, you know? I'd like to, it seems like a nice gesture for employees, I guess, at that point, if they spent that much time and given that much of their life to the city, that they should be afforded the ability to do the same as somebody that's under contract there, if it doesn't cost the city any more money.
And you're saying let go without cause?
Correct.
Only if they're let go without cause, yes.
How many people in the last ten years have we let go for no cause?
I'm not saying we have, that was the same discussion we had with City Clerk.
I'm just trying to, trying to break my, trying to wrap my hands around...
But it doesn't matter how many times it happened, it's just a matter of, what if it did happen and we wanted to...
I think the twenty-five and out is a privilege for you, being compensated if you do your full twenty-five to get that benefit.
But you do understand that this person would have to pay a large sum of money to continue it, so that would be their decision on whether they want to do that, I guess, is my point.
That's what the part of the dissension was with giving it to Ken, was because we didn't want to offer it to everybody, because that would be the next step, and we didn't want to take that step.
Okay, I understand that, and we talked about that a lot, but what is, what is the, what's the problem with offering it? If it's relatively ever gonna be used, I guess, and doesn't cost the city any more money?
What's the advantage to offering it to the city?
What is the advantage, I mean, you're saying...
I think it's a good gesture.
But it would cost the city money. If they paid it and they got twenty-five, because when you get twenty-five in, you can start drawing. Right, you don't have to wait till you're sixty.
So, there would be, there would be a cost.
There would be a cost.
Minimal, minimal in that last...
Well, not necessarily.
Well, they'd be drawing for ten years, from fifty to sixty, whereas if they only had twenty-three years in, it would be put on hold, and then they would start drawing retirement at sixty, or whatever's in their contract.
And then how do you determine what's fair for some or not fair for all?
I'm just, I'm just bringing the topic up for discussion because of the discussion we had during those times, especially with the City Clerk's contract.
No, that discussion during the City Clerk was, we didn't want him to get fired, have five people come in and fire him. That was that discussion, you're talking about a total, whole different discussion.
I'm not talking about firing him, I'm just talking about the offering them to buy out the remaining years.
But you're saying we already talked about it, we have not talked about it. We talked about Ken's role, that's five commissioners coming in and firing them like they did in Meskegon, and that, that's why you proposed that back then, but just to offer it to whoever, that we've never discussed that as of now.
It was discussed, that portion of it was discussed during that same time period. I'm just bringing it up for a way of just giving employees something else to, for assurances of upon retirement, or upon getting close to retirement, having the ability to do something that they would normally not be able to do if it stays the way it is. That's all I'm looking at, so...
I wasn't here during that time, and I remember it coming up, and to be honest, that question, like, why would we do that? I didn't understand why we did it in the first place, but I didn't have all the details, okay? It's done, we have it, but I have to confess, just as a non-commissioned time, I'm thinking, well, if it's okay to do that, why wouldn't we do that for all? I mean, the scenario I thought of is, I'm hired by the city, I'm forty-five years old, so I'm hired at the city. Or, you know, retire at sixty-five or sixty-seven, I don't hit that twenty-five, I don't want to work till seventy. And it is, I'm trying, I don't know the numbers to this, the buyout, like, the buy, the... When you say it's bought out, that's not inexpensive, I wouldn't think.
No, no, it's not, it's...
It depends on how mu, it depends on the number of factors, including how many years you have to buy out, what the, what the value of things are, I mean, it's a complex calculation that is run anytime. Correct. It's not gonna be the same for everyone.
How many years to be vested?
Ten years now, ten years now. And that's changed over time, so...
Yeah, even for, for teachers, they, new teachers, they used to let teachers buy years.
They don't do that anymore.
Yeah, no, that's gone, that's out the window.
I'm not talking about his willingness, I'm saying only if they're let go without cause, to give them an opportunity.
All you gotta do is work till fifty-five. And then you're vested, you will get something at sixty, whether you work five more years, right?
Correct, and that's, that's the same in this, so, the late, the late year scenario, you're working, if you're working to sixty-five, you're gonna get your pension at sixty-five, so that's not...
I don't think your generosity there, Vice Mayor Mullins, would translate to the taxpayer who's, you know, paying this as well, so... I think you'd have to be careful.
I'm not trying to make a decision, I'm just wanting, it's worth a conversation to see what that might look like, and it's not like we're, we're talking, you say nobody gets, who's gonna get fired, that's my whole point. This isn't gonna happen every year, this might be a once-in-a-decade kind of thing that might happen or something, it's not like it's something that's happening.
But you won't lose your retirement.
You're not losing your retirement.
You may just have to wait till sixty to draw it.
Yeah, you're not losing your retirement, if you work twenty-two years and you decide to quit.
Right, which also will get the full benefit.
You'll get the full, you'll get the full amount.
You would get the benefit that you worked for, for twenty years, twenty-three years, you're gonna get whatever you put in.
Exactly, exactly, I know this, yeah.
I think we should have a work session on this. Happy to explain to you all how it works. Trust me when I say, even holidays can best with my pension now.
There's no reason why, there's no reason why you've been looking at it closely recently, is there, Barry?
Here I was gonna ask Andrew what his total is for the buyout, if we piss him off one more time?
I think, this goes to me anyway, having been here as long as I have, but honestly, when you, when you come into the position, unless the rules change after you get hired, you know what the rules are when you go leave, whether or not you spend twenty-one years, twenty-two years, twenty-eight years. You know the rules. So, you may not like the rules, but you're there.
I agree with you.
Yep. Would you see any benefit for you if you were here for twenty-three years and were let go for no reason whatsoever?
Well, he can't answer my street question on the garbage can. He's exempt from that question, so...
Let's not, let's not point out things to individual staff members, that's a good point, yeah.
Yes, yes.
But if, but if you approve it, I'll buy twenty-one years, that's not a problem, I mean, check the bar.
I don't think, I don't think any, any same proposal would have us being able to buy out more than a couple of years before we did any.
That's, that's what I'm talking about, not twenty years.
I think the appropriate time to have this discussion is if we're doing a handbook revision.
When it's his money, not taxpayer money.
And we, we are looking, we will be doing more, more frequent handbook revisions, including one in the coming years. I can always have some more available information on the potential costs of that and what that, what that might look like for you at that point, if that's something.
I would rather look at a cola instead of changing what Jeff is saying, because our retire, I get a lot of calls from retirees wanting to, we do call, I just tell them, no, no, it did not happen with my answer to call you, and I don't know how many have called, but I've had questions.
So far, none, so far, none, but...
It's not gonna happen, but you're more than welcome to talk to Andrew.
Yeah.
Well, that was interesting. I just, I was just wanting to bring it up for further discussion at a later time, quite possibly, so when it comes time for handbook stuff, it would be a nice time to really, you know, kind of add in things and get full understanding for everyone. Oh, okay, well, then that was it, because I just figured we had time, I thought I might turn into a little bit of discussion, but I didn't want to finish it like this. I will end with this, kindness is never a weakness, it's strength in its purest form, so let's all be, let's all be kind.
I thought you were gonna say, let's give money to everybody, good thing you didn't, but... All right, like everybody said, it's Thanksgiving time, hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving, and all my Michigan fans, they didn't say anything about the big game coming up, I mean, I'm a little disappointed in some of you, Michigan fans.
I got my Michigan water bottle.
No, no, go Blue, huh?
There's nothing to say.
All right.
We're ready.
Well, we'll leave it at that, hope you guys have, enjoy the rest of your work week, and enjoy your time off with family, it's super, super important. I've asked Andrew to take some time off, but he don't listen, so, use the word to the end, but anyways, let's take a roll call for closed session.
I move we go into closed session for the purpose of discussion of purchase of property.
Second.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Boring?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abs?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Perez?
Yes.
We're in closed session.
They do always put that game, they always put that game. That's what Ohio's... They lose their top seed when they, when they do that. I'm gonna blame him then.
That's what you predict.
Yeah, you can't take it away, because you can delay, so you delay, so it doesn't cost anything, yeah, it costs ten years.
That's the, or, you know, it depends on how old, it could be, you know, there's some people that got hired in eighteen, it could be more than that.